Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is 6:02 on October 21st, 2025. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I note for the record that this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting tonight? All right. Seeing not a note for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are Board members Liz Klein, Julie Straley, and myself, William Ramsey, Chair. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. For those willing and able, please face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have a couple sets of minutes to go over tonight. Are you ready to proceed, Liz?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
All right. Without a take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 16th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. The motion carries unanimously. I'll take a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 25th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion carries unanimously, and I'll take a third motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 30th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider the application for a restaurant, common victueller, all alcoholic beverages licensed by Salty Days Hingham LLC, doing business as Salty Days, 19 Shipyard Drive, Hingham. John McDaniel is a manager there. The applicant has requested a continuance until November 18th, 2025. Any objection from any members of the board? Hearing no objection, that motion for continuance is granted. Next item on the agenda is to consider the application for a restaurant, common victueller, all alcoholic beverages licensed by KH1 LLC, doing business as Cove Club, 20 Broad Cove Road, Hingham. Robert Hedley is the manager. The applicant has requested a continuance until October 28th, 2025. Any objection from any member of the board regarding the request for continuance?
No.
Hearing none, that motion is allowed. That matter is continued. All right. Next item on the agenda is an update regarding Article 97 petition for the Hingham Center for Active Living Project. We're thrilled to have Town Real Estate Council joining us tonight. Susan, if you could just introduce yourself on the record and walk us through what we received, the letter we received, and what that means for the project.
Sure. So my name is Susan Murphy. I'm Special Real Estate Counsel to the Town. And in connection with the 2025 Town Meeting, there was a vote of two-thirds of Town Meeting to authorize the Select Board to file a petition, which is in effect a bill with the legislature under Article 97 of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution in order to use a small portion of the federal lands to park program land in the public recreation area along Bear Cove Park Drive for the new Hingham Center for Active Living. So as part of, in addition to filing that bill, which was done by Hingham's legislative representatives at the state legislature, there is statute that requires that the town submit information to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And it's under Mass. General Law's Chapter 3, Section 5A, and to provide information regarding the site, the Article 97 site, and also any alternative locations and alternatives analysis for alternatives that were considered by the town, and then also to propose alternative or replacement land that is equal or greater in value in three different ways from the impacted Article 97 land. So the town, since Town Meeting, has been engaged in all of these activities, including submission of comprehensive information that was required by the EEA, the state agency that oversees all environmental matters for the state. So they had to make their determination. So one of the determinations, excuse me, as to value was whether or not the natural resource value of the replacement land, and this is land over near Plymouth River School, whether the natural resource value of the replacement land was greater or equal than that of the proposed HCal site on Bear Cove Park Drive. And in a letter dated October 3rd and received by the town on October 10th, that determination was made. And the Secretary states in the letter that the replacement land is of greater or equal natural resource value as compared to the impacted land, which is the proposed HCal site. In addition, which is important because I know it's been of interest to members of the public in Hingham, it states in the determination that the impacted land is mapped as an area of environmental concern. However, the analysis provided in the alternatives analysis, and this was an analysis that the town had done, had a independent wetland scientist review the potential impacts on the AC/EC. And the Secretary of EEA states that that independent analysis that was submitted by the town states that the work does not demonstrate the potential to adversely affect the AC/EC, which EEA has reviewed and accepted. So the Secretary for the top environmental agency in the state has made a determination that the HCal project would not adversely impact the AC/EC. So, you know, I think that that's really important because there are probably a lot of residents in the town that may have had concern about that. So this letter, in addition to coming to the town, also went to the town's legislative representatives, Representative Joan Moschino and Senator Patrick O'Connor. And at this point, the bill, which is House Bill 4314, has been reported favorably out of the Joint Committees on Municipalities. They reviewed the bill, and they have made a positive recommendation to their colleagues in the full legislature, in the full House. But it's a joint committee, so that goes to both the House and the Senate. And now it's making its way through the House. It's a complicated proceeding, but they go through three readings, they call it, before they bring it to a full vote. It has made it through the third reading, and the next step is that it will be put on the docket for a full session of the House because it needs to be approved by a two-thirds roll call vote of the House of Representatives and the Senate. So I understand from Representative Moschino that there may be some full sessions of the House this month, but we're waiting to see if it'll find out if it's on the docket. Once that occurs, then it'll move over to the Senate and go through a similar process. But this letter also went to the legislature to demonstrate that the town had complied with the state statute with respect to natural resource value. I mentioned that there were three other values that the statute looks at. One of them has to do with land area. The replacement land site is significantly larger than the proposed HCal site. So as far as land area, it is greater value in that respect. And the third one is monetary value, and the town, in accordance with the statute, did have an independent appraisal conducted, and the independent appraisal also determined that the monetary value of the replacement land is greater than the HCal site. So the town has satisfied all three conditions of the statute that was adopted to implement Article 97, and now it's just making its way through the legislature.
All right. Great. I got a couple follow-up questions. But let me just start with the letter. I know we've been actually waiting it. You mentioned it still requires a two-thirds vote in the House. Does the Senate require two-thirds as well?
Yes, both Houses. That's what the constitutional amendment requires.
All right. And what would have happened to the bill or the legislation if the Secretary opined that the value of the replacement land was not equal or greater? Would that have killed?
No. What would have happened is that either the agency or the legislature would have come back to the town and asked the town either to provide additional replacement land or potentially a payment in lieu. But it would not, this determination is not a, it is not an approval or a denial. Only the legislature can rule on Article 97 petitions ultimately. The statute just provides a process where the Secretary reviews it for natural resource value to determine whether or not it's equal or greater.
Great. Well, I know it's a, it's a big step in the process, so happy to get that, that letter, and good to see that the process is moving forward as we were waiting for that for a while. That's, that's great to hear that. Why don't we do this? Do you have any questions about the letter itself? I have some other questions for Susan, but I want to see if you have any questions about the letter at this point.
No.
Okay.
I do not.
All right. So let me, I want to ask you a couple other questions, Susan, as well, because, you know, we've been, we've been getting a lot of correspondence from residents about the project, about the site, so kind of wanted to use tonight to obviously stay within the scope of the agenda item, but I have some other questions, too, and I think are important to talk about.
Sure.
We've got a lot of interest lately in the Union Street property, all right? And a lot of, a lot of residents have said, hey, why not Union Street? It's already cleared. You know, it's, it's an area down there that appears from the street, streetscape to be a suitable location. Is that, is that, if we were to pivot to Union Street tomorrow, could we build the Center for Active Living there?
I can walk the board through some of the aspects of that site.
Great.
Particularly in comparison to the chosen site. And in a minute, we're going to share some images that will show the distinct.
Okay, great.
But I just want to start with, when the board reviewed the possible alternatives, and I believe it was maybe August of 2023, there was a fair amount of discussion. It mostly centered on impacts to that neighborhood. First of all, the people who use that site for its current use, but also the fact that the high, the high school is there, all the high school fields are there, the traffic there. It was also noted that there was a single-family home right up right next to this parcel. So that, that was the focus of the discussion. In the light of questions that the, that the board has been receiving, Mr. Mayo asked me to kind of look at some of the assertions that the site is readily developable. And so what I'd like to do is, first, if you don't mind, would you just put up the one that is the HCal GIS? Share that. Okay. So if, what you're looking at is... So what you're looking at is a screenshot from Hingham GIS. That is, the red rectangle is my rough approximation, just using the tool on GIS, so it may not be exact, of the HCal site. On this, on this GIS, I have turned on the wetlands resources, the intermittent streams or other water bodies, the, I'm trying to think of all the layers I turned on. I pretty, I turned on floodplain, I turned on all of those layers on the GIS. And you can see where the rectangle is in relation to all of the layers that I turned on, on the GIS. So now, and you can, none of, nothing, there's none of those resources popped up in the rectangle for the proposed project. Can you switch to the Union Street GIS? So the yellow box, the yellow pseudo-rectangle is the Union Street parcel.
Hold on. You guys, I'll share the other one, and we share that one.
So let me just walk through my notes. The total parcel size is about 11 acres, so it's a good-sized parcel. The existing cleared portion of the site that you see there is approximately 3.4 acres, which currently the HCal design requires a brout four and a half to five acres. So there's not sufficient area in the already cleared area for the HCal as currently designed. The rest is densely wooded, and a good portion would also have to be cleared. The environmental condition of the property is the Weir River, so where you see the dark red that goes along the westerly, northwesterly boundary, so west being up, I mean, north being up, the northwesterly boundary, that is where the Weir River goes. So along that westerly boundary, you have the Weir River. The Weir River requires a 200-foot setback from the riverbank. So just having a blue line for the river, which is hard to see the blue line, that doesn't even designate the full 200-foot setback that would be required under state environmental laws. Over four acres, so this is, you're seeing lots of floodplain there. Over four acres of this site is within the floodplain, and over two acres of it is wetlands. The entire parcel is within Hingham's aquifer, including the interim aquifer protection district. So those lines that you see coming down, straight lines, is all, is the interim wellhead protection area for the town's aquifer and, and its wells, for the free street wells. In addition, the EEA Natural Resource Tool, which is the tool that EEA uses for Article 97 purposes, has identified over four acres of this parcel as being biomapped as aquatic core habitat. The EEA Natural Resource Tool for the Bear Cove Park Drive site mapped zero core habitat areas of any kind, and this is four acres of aquatic core habitat. In addition, in the bottom right, which is kind of right where the stop sharing, so maybe that, right there, you can see the green dot, that's a single-family home right there on the bottom right of the site, right directly adjacent, plus there's a few other next to it. Those houses all have septic systems on them. And directly across the street is the Home Meadows, which has 54 townhomes in it, directly across the street. On either side is the high school and the high school fields, which are used seven days a week, most months of the year, for athletic purpose, for sports purposes. In addition, this site is not within the Hingham North Sewer District. So in the North Sewer District, and significantly north of this parcel, the high school was permitted in, I believe it was 1969, under special permission from the state to attach because of the size of the high school and the wastewater needs. The town needed to get special permission to tie in the high school. The state separately for Wampatuckseve Park had to get similar permission. But in order, the town cannot tie, and none of those homes, all of those homes have septic systems, and I've confirmed this with the Board of Health as well, they all have septic systems because they are not permitted to tie into sewer. And in fact, there is a very extensive process, OP 11, through the MWRA that includes special legislation to actually tie in any property to sewer that's not within a recognized sewer district. That would require, in the interim wellhead protection district in the town aquifer, next to a river and wetlands, to try to site a septic system of sufficient size for the HCal. Once you try to site the septic system and put it somewhere that could even get approved by the Board of Health for a project this size, it would, you have to move everything away from the westerly, so you're moving everything east towards the single-family homes, citing a septic system, and then having to try to cite the Center for Active Living Building and all of the parking that's required with it. So, you know, I, I will not opine as to whether or not the board or the building committee would deem that as something that's feasible for the, for placing the HCal there, but those are all the constraints that would be faced. So basically, you can just tell, even just by looking with the two different plans, that the currently proposed HCal site, when you turn on all the layers, has zero. And when you turn on all of the layers, you get this for the site. And so that's the environmental impact difference of those two sites. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about the site.
Any question about this site before I move on to the next topic?
No, but thank you for showing us the, the layers and, and what the constraints would be.
Yes, I remember the discussion, but thank you for reviewing it. It's important for people to be reminded or hear it for the first time, so thank you.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know that at your original meeting, that it got into as much depth about the wetlands, the river, the floodplain, and the aquifer. I don't believe that, maybe you got into that much depth.
It did not, which is why I want to use this enough to go into a little bit of depth.
Sure.
So I was aware of some of the restraints, but thank you for, for your work.
Sure.
All right. Another, another site I've been getting correspondence upon is the Hitchcock Shoe Building. It's on Beale Street.
Sure.
Existing structure of a pretty good size. Could we pivot to that building?
Certainly. So Mr. Mayo also asked me to look at that after the board had received some questions in the recent weeks. So as people may be aware, the building has currently been on the market. My understanding, and in fact, I was on a meeting where it was discussed unrelated to the HCal, that that building is under a purchase and sale agreement with a third party currently. But even, let's, for the sake of argument, let's say it's not. Let's say it's on the market right now. There's, there's a couple of issues. One is timing and legal requirements. The other ones have to do with costs, and I did confer with a couple of members of the project team that was hired by the town for the HCal to discuss about the costs and the constraints of trying to kind of rehab or refit that property. But the legal requirements might take care of it right there. In order for the town to acquire real estate, it has to go through a procurement process the, under Mass. General Law's Chapter 30B. Typically, that procurement process requires an RFP, where the town would put out an RFP and say, we're looking for a site with or without a building of, at least, the site's at least this size, this size, and these are all the needs we have for this property. Now, there are some exceptions, and there's something called a unique acquisition, but in order to bypass a full RFP and do a unique acquisition, you have to submit to the central register the justification for bypassing the RFP process. For example, the town, when it acquired the public safety facility, did a unique acquisition. Why was the town able to do that? Because the location of the fire station was very dependent on the call area. So you couldn't say, go out for an RFP and say, hey, we need a five-acre site for a public safety facility, and end up getting it, you know, on Union Street, where you have a, there is a fire station up in that area. The town needed a location in the 3A, there was circles, there were many presentations that Mr. Mayo gave to the board and the building committee did about the call area. So those are the types of situations where you could do that. It's probably unlikely that you can say, well, we can buy, we're going to buy this property because we have reasons why Hingham Center for Active Living can only be on this location on Beale Street. So the procurement process in and of itself would probably foreclose the town from just negotiating with one owner of one property for this type of building, for this type of use. Even if you could get past that, what would happen is the town would need to get an appraisal that could take a couple of months. You would also have to have a willing seller who would negotiate with the town on, on the price. The town would then have to call a special town meeting or wait till, tell me, which a seller would probably unlikely to do. I understand that Mr. Mayo, that a special town meeting could be anywhere from, what, $50,000 to $70,000, a special town meeting just for that purpose. And so that's all of the kind of the legal and timing requirements. With respect to the costs, although the assessed value is about $4.5 million, assessed values and market or appraised values are very different. And in the commercial world, they're often significantly higher. So again, taking the public safety facility as an example, the appraised value, when the town went out for an appraisal on that property, was 45% higher than the town's assessed value, and that's pretty typical for commercial property. There is no, as it's also typical with commercial property, there is no listing price, so there's not even a sense of what the seller, the owner of this property might be interested. So you have the first unknown of, you know, it's assessed at $4.5 million, the purchase price could be $6.5, $7 million, quite, quite up there. All of the funds that the town spent on the prior alternatives analysis is now, you know, money spent with no benefit. All of the funds on the feasibility and design of Bear Cove Park is not transferable. It's already been spent on the Bear Cove Park Drive location. It's, a lot of it's already been spent, but it's not transferable because Town Meeting authorized for that location. And then there's the building itself. It's a 25,000-square-foot open warehouse, wide-open warehouse with a small mezzanine of 7,000 square feet for offices. It can't be used in its current condition for the HCal. It would require new design funds to be appropriated by Town Meeting. Based on the information we were able to publicly get about the building from the marketing materials, it doesn't appear to have an elevator, all those types of things that would have to be refitted. It was built in 1991, so it does not comply with stretch code requirements. It would have to be completely, you know, and because of the level of renovation, not the new specialized code wouldn't apply, but the stretch code would apply to renovate a commercial building. It's served by natural gas, which would have to be a full retrofit of the entire HVAC system in order to meet the town's climate goals. And the site currently only has 60 parking spaces, which would require significant site modifications. So there would have to be a significant amount of site work to redesign the entire site in order to create sufficient parking. And there would likely be a multi-year delay, which could also have potential inflationary impacts. So all of those costs and retrofit was shared with me by the town's design team and OPM. So aside from the fact that someone else has already got an agreement to buy it, but anyway, that's all the information that I was able to obtain about that location.
Liz and Julie, any question, follow-up questions on that site?
No, that was great analysis. Thank you.
Liz?
Yes, I appreciate you going through that. I think people are trying to be creative and offer suggestions, which we appreciate, but we have done our due diligence, and I appreciate you, though, running that to ground and understanding that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Susan, next I want to focus your attention on the existing building that's on the site with the proposed Cal is going to be.
Right.
There's a building there that's going to come down as part of this project. What, if any, public benefit is there to having that building come down?
Well, similar to other buildings that have come down, for example, when the Carlson Field Complex was built, there were a number of buildings that were taken down. The buildings date back to the original Naval Depot. The buildings date back to the original Naval Depot. They, they're, you know, not being maintained, so unlike the Bear Cove Fire Museum, that's had the benefit of a lot of upgrades to the building. There, it is, it's not in usable, it's not in usable condition. It's currently not in use other than for some miscellaneous storage, which is temporary. As, you know, the National Park Service has indicated, at some point, the town, the town would need to make use of that land for recreational, public recreational purposes. So if there's just some miscellaneous storage, which is temporary. So there's no actual use being made of that building. The, the area around the preliminary Phase 1 environmental that was done shows that there's an indication, probably not in reportable quantities, but that there is some contamination, mainly related to the fact that there were railroad tracks. So for example, that dirt road that everyone kind of drives up if you're going to Building 14, that was part of the railroad system that went through the entire Naval Depot. And it was found that a lot of the, the ties, the railroad ties back in the day were soaked in creosote type of oil, that type of stuff. So it's not like there's a big toxic waste dump there, but there is some contaminants in the soil that, that has to be all addressed. In addition, the building itself has asbestos, lead paint, and, you know, and other hazardous materials under Massachusetts law that would, would get remediated and taken out as part of the site. You know, there's also been experience in town that when these buildings are left, kind of abandoned, in this case, there's some storage, so there is at least some activity that happens there when the town DPW, et cetera, needs to access it, so it's not completely. But as everyone knows, there were issues in the past with criminal activity, with having dilapidated and underutilized buildings within this former depot land, so.
Great, thank you. And my last question for you, and I have a couple for Tom, but the issue of the wildlife sanctuary keeps coming up. Can you, can you address that? Is it a wildlife sanctuary, isn't it? And any, any information that might be helpful for people to understand? That would be appreciated.
Sure, there's a lot of information on that. It is not. It is not a wildlife sanctuary or wildlife refuge. So in 1985, there was a town meeting vote, and the vote had many conditions attached to it. Concurrent of the Borough of Outdoor Recreation, which I don't know, I think now the wildlife sanctuaries are overseen by the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, but at the time in 1985, concurrent or consent of the Bureau of the Outdoor Recreation, concurrent or consent, if any, required from the United States of America, so that was part of, at that point, it wasn't necessarily National Park Service, but it would have been the Department of the Interior. Compliance with all Massachusetts general laws, United States statutes, and Hingham Town bylaws, an act of the General Court. All of these things were preconditions, and it was to authorize the Select Board to take the necessary actions to try to establish a wildlife refuge, which was not, the term under the state statute is a wildlife sanctuary, not a wildlife refuge. So these are all of the conditions. In 2017, at the request of the then-chair of the Bear Cove Park Committee, Town Administrator Ted Alexiadist asked if, if this could get looked into, primarily because it was, there was a lot of development, I think mainly maybe related to the Cove being constructed, that 40B project. There were a lot of questions. So I spent a significant amount of time at that time, and it was all shared with the Chair of the Bear Cove Park Committee at the same time, talking, trying to determine whether any of these conditions had been met in the town meeting vote, and none of them have been met. So I talked to the legislate, the legislatures for the town at the time, the state rep, the state senator. I contacted the state archives, they, they had their offices checked with state archives. There were never any, there was never any legislation filed. I spoke at length to the Fisheries of Fisheries and Wildlife. They actually maintain a map. That's an interactive map that anyone in the public can go on, and you can see all of the wildlife sanctuaries and other types of properties that they, that have been designated by the state. And they have, they confirmed in writing in 2017 that there was never any designation of any land in Hingham as a wildlife sanctuary, and that has not changed since 2017. So I, I believe what happened is that because there was a town meeting vote, people are thinking, "Great, there was a town meeting vote. It's a wildlife sanctuary," forgetting that there are many different hoops that have to be jumped through and has to be satisfied. And in this case, there was one, two, three, four, five different conditions that had to be met, and none of, none of them were met. And, and part of that may be because of the statute itself. The statute, which is the same today, because I went back at the time to the state archives, and I got a certified copy of the statute that applied to wildlife sanctuaries in 1988, And it states that the, the, where is it? I'm trying to skip the exact language. The Director, so that's Fisheries and Wildlife, may acquire, so this is the state, may acquire in fee, by purchase, gift, or devise, or may lease, or with the consent of the owners may control land, water, or shore rights for the purposes of a wildlife sanctuary. That's how you establish a wildlife sanctuary under Massachusetts state law. It's through the Director, and it's land that the state acquires or controls, none of which ever occurred with any land in Hingham. So that, that is the history, and I understand that there was a understanding and a belief that because there was this vote in the past, that it was an actual legal designated wildlife sanctuary or refuge, but from a legal perspective, it, it's not, and it's never has been.
Thank you. I, I have just a couple of questions, Tom, for you. It's also been suggested to me that we should pivot the project to the Plymouth River School. I asked you to look into that for the board, and what can, what can you tell us? What'd you find out?
Sure. So I spoke with the school department today, and they have no plans to abandon or otherwise not utilize the Plymouth River School fully, utilize it fully for their purposes, for school purposes, now or anytime in the foreseeable future. In fact, they have actually added a kindergarten class this year because of an increase in enrollment.
So no plans to close that school?
No plans at all to close, to close that school.
Okay, and my last question for you, Tom, is, you know, we, there is still a lot of public questions about, you know, the town hall option, and can you just go over and summarize that?
Sure.
Take a minute to summarize that, if you could.
Sure. Look at my friend, Mr. Carey, in the audience, because he, he, he spent a lot of time on this back in 2024. The feasibility study evaluated multiple options at town hall, including expansion up and out and, and, you know, expanding the existing building, standing, standalone new construction in multiple, you know, configurations in multiple locations, Cronin Field and others. The consultants utilized a scorecard methodology to rank over 20 site evaluation criteria, and across about 15-ish public meetings in Nova, and throughout 2024, in November of 2024, the building committee concluded that the town hall site was not feasible due to many significant concerns, not the least of which I'll ad lib is, parking was just a nonstarter at this site. But there were dozens of reasons why it, this site scored so much lower than the Bear Cove Park site.
And I would add to that, too, because I was involved, involved in that discussion, was the, the proposed resolution to the parking would have been to pave over Cronin Field or Haley Field. That suggestion was met by a flurry of objections from youth baseball advocates. I had multiple conversations with the president of youth baseball, expressing his objection to that plan. Multiple objections from the Butters to, to that plan to create a parking in the, over Cronin Field or Haley Field. Some members, including members of the Rec Commission, questioned the legality of the ability to take Cronin Field that was gifted to the town under the care, custody, control of the Rec Department for baseball. So that would have been a legal problem as well. And I want, just want to note that there was only one person on the world that wanted town hall more than me, because I was, really wanted that to happen. And that was Tom Carey, who was the Chair of the Committee, and he advocated to keep it at town hall for an entire 12 months. And finally, even Tom came around and said, "You know, it's not feasible. It's not going to work." So it was studied for a year by the building committee. Parking, the driveway next to Sanborn was, was a problem, as well as a host of other issues. I want to direct the public's attention to the feasibility study. That is, was a very well-done document. It's on the town website. If you want more information about the findings of the building committee and the opinions of the experts, I would direct you there. And before I yield to my colleagues, I also wanted to note, a lot of the information Susan has discussed are on the HCal Building Committee site on our website. It's under FAQs. I think it's loaded as land location or land site. So for more information about some of the, some of the details Susan went over, I would direct your attention to our website, which has a great amount of information. So with that, I'll yield to Liz.
Excellent. Tom, the presentation from November 2024 that you referenced, is that on the website as well?
That was the, that was the decision date for the, for the building committee when they found it to be not feasible. I can find that decision and, and get it on the website if you'd like.
Okay. It might be helpful. I think that scorecard is a nice kind of executive summary of what we're talking about the feasibility study, and I think that would be helpful for people. I think we've all heard from the public confusion about, we thought it was going to be at town hall, what has happened? So if you haven't been engaged over the last year, that's a great way to catch up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great, Julie?
Thank you. I just appreciate the discussion tonight, the ability to kind of reset the table and go back through suggestions that people have brought forward about potential locations and sort of, there are people who have joined and, joined in these meetings and discussions at different times over the years. So you have people who've been here from the very beginning, and then you have people who have started tuning in in recent months. So I just want to thank Susan for coming and for Tom, just to go over some of these well-frequently asked questions or sites that have brought up to, to sort of reiterate why we selected the Bear Cove Park site, Bear Cove Park Drive site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, Susan, before I take public comment? No, Tom? All right, public comment? Anybody in the room? Anita, go ahead. Statement address for the record.
Anita Ryan, 37 Baker Hill Drive. Thank you. That covered a lot. I wasn't expecting the amount of breadth, but appreciate the, the conversation. Let's start with the wildlife refuge. So am I correct that the warrant article, the conditions, I think, Ms. Murphy?
Put the mic in front of you, please.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Can you, is that okay?
Yeah.
Some of the conditions that you referenced, I believe the warrant article said, "If required." So there weren't mandatory conditions. Is that correct?
Go ahead. Yeah, can you answer? Yeah, I'm going to direct it to you.
So the concurrent or consent, if required, of Bureau of Outdoor Recreation, if required from the United States, but it did set state an act of the General Court authorizing and approving use for the purposes described therein. So it did require an act of the General Court, which was never obtained.
And who do you think, who, who wrote up these words? Because they're quite technical and, and legal, and was it the Board of Selectmen?
I wasn't here in 1985, and I don't believe anyone at this table was.
Okay. Well, I think some people might, well, not at the table, but in the town.
I was 11. Tom Carey might remember. He's been around a while.
So I was looking at minutes of the Back River Committee, and it was actually Hingham Police Officer George Doolan, who was on the Back River Committee, and he worked with Town Council George Ford to draft this article.
Well, then you knew who wrote it. So you asked me, but you knew.
Um.
Okay, just, I just want to, I just, is that true? Is that accurate?
That's what the minutes reflect.
Okay, thank you.
That's what the minutes reflect. So this individual, this Hingham Police Officer, worked with Town Council to draft, to come up with these, this article, which was then voted on at town hall, and it was voted unanimously. No one opposed it. It passed unanimously. And then after the meeting, George Doolan, according to the minutes of the Back River Committee, he worked with that committee, and he sent a letter to the Attorney General. And I, my understanding is that the main impetus of this article was they didn't want animals to be shot and killed, and they wanted to protect those animals. And that's reflected in the words. It says, you know, this article, et cetera, et cetera, "so that the birds and mammals in said area to be protected, and so that a sanctuary for said wildlife can be provided." So Mr. Doolan, I imagine working with Town Council, but I don't know, had a letter written to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General wrote back and said, "Okay, I understand no guns allowed or no hunting in that area, and you don't need my consent." Now, I understand, I think there's a little bit of a different position, and you're taking the position that under a specific statute, it's not recognized by law as a wildlife refuge. And I just want to appreciate that at a certain point in time, there was a different Town Council, and that Town Council worked with this individual, that Town Council assisted that individual to take certain steps, that Town Council was here possibly when we, as a town, erected a sign that says wildlife sanctuary.
That's incorrect. The sign was erected in 2004, so that is not correct.
Okay. Who was Town Council at the time?
I don't know, but the, the sign had nothing to do with Town Council. The sign, the Bear Cove Park Committee, under the mistaken belief that it was a wildlife sanctuary, sent, requested that the DPW install the sign, and the DPW installed the sign in 2004.
And who paid for the sign?
I am unaware of who paid for the sign.
Okay.
I, if I could, Bill, I'd also like to respond to something.
Sure.
Under Massachusetts law, when town meeting votes, the only articles that require the approval of the Attorney General are bylaws. So, and this doesn't even apply to cities, it only applies to town. So anytime the town adopts a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw, then that requires the review by the Attorney General. There would have been no reason to seek or need the approval of the Attorney General for this article. They're not referenced in this article. It required an act of the General Court. So I just want to clarify that, that the Attorney General at the time likely said, "You don't need my consent," because they have no jurisdiction in Massachusetts with respect to this type of town meeting vote.
But somebody in the town believed it was sufficient? Somebody in the town believed they had done what they needed to do?
I, I think you're assuming that considering that the warrant article states that it is subject to, that the creation of this wildlife refuge is subject to, not if necessary, it says, is subject to an act of the General Court. So I don't believe anyone in the town would have properly believed it was sufficient.
But they erected a sign that said that. Okay. Moving on, could I just ask about the Union Street parcel? You mentioned the 200-river setback. The site at Bear Cove Park, you also had to deal with a 200-river setback because of the perennial stream?
The, the site as site, the location of the proposed HCal development site is outside of any riverfront setback, and it was intentionally, the location was intentionally identified by the town, by work between the town conservation agent and the town engineer in order to be able to cite it in a way that avoided any wetland resources.
Right, and that includes a 200-river front boundary?
That is correct.
Okay. And there are homes built in the aquifer, is that right? The Weir River Aquifer?
Aquifer.
Aquifer?
Yes, homes can get, be built. An aquifer does not prevent construction, however, it constrains septic systems in particular.
And would it be possible, though, to get sewer approval the way the high school did and the DCR did?
It's a very lengthy process, known as the OP 11 process through the MWRA, that it, and as part of it also requires a special legislative act of the legislature. as part of it also requires a special legislative act of the Legislature to get, if it were to be approved, by the MWRA.
Sort of similar to Article 97. And the Article 97 petition letter that you talked about originally, it only deals with one issue, isn't that right? Like, the relative natural resources of the two lots? It's not, it's not an adjudication on the entire petition?
I stated what it is. I stated it's a determination as to whether or not the replacement land is of equal or greater natural resource value than the Bear Cove Park Drive site, which the Secretary confirmed that it is.
Got it. Okay. And then, the letter also says that the land is not currently used, the HCal site is not currently used for passive or active recreation. Did I read that right?
Are you reading it? Then I'm sure you're reading it right.
Do you agree with that?
That is correct. And I'm aware that there is a trailhead that leaves from the parking lot at the corner that is in the southwest corner, we don't have the picture up there, in the very southwest corner of the proposed HCal site, there is an entrance to a trail known as Tucker Way Path, which, as the Building Committee has stated, it is, one of their goals is to increase, maintain and increase interaction with the park itself, so that trailhead or the access to Tucker's Path Way, or Tucker's Way Path, getting that backwards, is going to be maintained as part of the site layout. They're going to make sure that there is continued access. So that is not, that is just a trailhead from the existing parking lot that just takes a little loop through the southwest corner. The overwhelming site is extremely difficult to access, and therefore it is not used by the public for any purpose, because, in particular, there's a dilapidated building on it, which there's no public access to that building.
And Tucker Swamp Path that you described, that's outside of the Stone Gate, right?
The trailhead to the path is outside the gate. The path itself is within the park.
The path, the Tucker Swamp Path?
It is the Tucker Way Path.
Tucker Way Path, and that is outside the park?
The access to that path starts outside the park gates.
Okay. I guess one thing I'm confused about is the site, the proposed Cal site, you're saying there's no current use of it for walking, trails, bird watching? Is that what the town has represented?
What the town has stated and is in the letter to EEA is that the site itself is not very accessible to the public. It is very treacherous to walk through that. I've been in with Mr. Mayo. There are old, rusted-out generators and other trash and equipment and other things that are left over from the Naval Depot, and it is not an area that, with the exception of this southwest corner trailhead, there is no accessible use to the public across that parcel. If people want to go tromping around in the woods and get loaded with ticks, I guess they're free to do that, but it is not part of the area that is highlighted for public access and use, but within the FLP land.
But if somebody chose to, they could walk through there and watch, look at the owls or the deers or the trees. And the whole, the reason why we had to do the Article 97 petition is because there's a change in use of this land? Is that right?
I'm sorry, are you asking me questions you don't know the answer to, or are you asking me questions you know the answer to? I'm just, I just want to be clear.
Does it matter?
Well, it does in the way you're presenting the questions.
Okay.
But yes, Article 97.
I'm trying to accomplish.
Yeah. It's not a deposition, Anita.
Understood.
Public comment, public questioning. So let's, I'll give you a couple more here, but let's.
Okay, I'll move along.
So if you would like to make comments, yeah.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. I'll run the meeting. Thank you, sir. Thank you, though. Appreciate it. So if you have questions for the public benefit, do that.
I do.
But your time is expiring soon, so go ahead.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Federal Parks to Land, other senior centers and community centers, are you aware of any?
I am, but I don't have the list here with me tonight.
Do you know how many? Because I tried to find out information and I couldn't.
I do not have that number for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the room have any public comment? All right, Brittany, I saw a couple of hands up when we had, let's go to Mr. Borgia first. John Borgia, how are you? Name and address, please.
Just unmuted. Good evening. John Borgia, 53 Lafayette Avenue. I'll be brief. I want to commend the Special Counsel on the extraordinarily detailed due diligence assessment that she presented tonight. I don't want to rehash history, but if we went back and looked at the transcript of the meeting in 2023, where we devoted less than five minutes to the discussion of Union Street, you know, I think that no one would have characterized that as a thorough due diligence assessment. This is certainly that, and so, again, I commend you. My concerns are more than satisfied. I would recommend, if it's possible, that the content that Susan Murphy presented tonight be condensed and published in some way in the anchor, because I think there have been a lot of comments in the anchor that reference the 2023 meeting, and I think this, what we heard tonight was, put those, was able to put those concerns, for me anyway, to rest. So again, great job, and I'm far more comfortable now with Bear Cove as a site than I was before. Thanks.
John, thank you for your comments.
I'd just like to say to, Mr. Borgia, thank you, first of all, for your comments. The FAQs that you referenced earlier, Mr. Chair, one of the FAQs speaks specifically about the Union Street Lot and summarizes what I went through. So if any members of the public or the anchor themselves would like to review those FAQs, which are on the town website, it contains a summary of the information that I provided to the Board tonight.
Great, thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, Hillary Hosmer, name and address, Hillary, please.
Hillary Hosmer, 204 Linden Pond's Way. I'd like to address one of the frequently asked questions on the website. It was brought up also by Ms. Murphy. It's whether or not Bear Cove Park is a wildlife sanctuary. This is key. I agree completely that the fisheries and wildlife may purchase or lease properties. They become FMAs, Fishery and Wildlife Managed Areas. However, I consulted with Dr. Brian Windmiller, the Conservation Biologist for Zoo New England, and his take on it is that this argument that 1985 Town Meeting vote is not sufficient for a wildlife sanctuary is spurious. In other words, fisheries and wildlife is not responsible for determining whether or not an area is a wildlife sanctuary. Fisheries and wildlife, as you know, is responsible for stocking ponds and making rules for hunting and games, and they do keep a map of wildlife sanctuaries, but towns do have the ability to declare a place a wildlife sanctuary. There's another frequently added question that I noticed that was wrong, and that was Mr. Mayo's summary of the April 15, 2023 meeting. I understand that that was improved upon. He said that all of the sites were discussed at that time in detail, and that was not true, and I hope he improves that on the frequently asked questions. So in summary, this, it's, this area is a wildlife sanctuary, and secondly, the options were not discussed sufficiently back in April of 2023, even though the FAQs are written to imply that they were.
All right, Ms. Hosmer, thank you. Do you want to, I know you were over the legal process.
I'm just going to respond to a couple of things. The first thing is, whether or not a town wishes to create its own title for any area is one thing. Whether that's what the 1985 Town Meeting did, it is not. The town voted "subject to" an act of the General Court to establish a wildlife refuge, and it said, "subject to compliance with all Massachusetts general laws." So that did not happen in Hingham in 1985. So with respect to the second issue, the FAQs speak to a Select Board meeting on August 15, 2023. That video for that meeting is available through Harbor Media. At that meeting, the town went through, the Select Board, I apologize, went through the Town Hall options. They discussed Bear Cove Park Drive, they discussed Union Street, they discussed the Armory. There was a fifth one. I don't know, Tom, if you remember off the top of your head.
Yes.
Thank you. The Selectman's Parcel on Beale Street. So all of those alternatives, which are also the alternatives that are mentioned in the materials that were submitted to the State Agency, EEOE, were discussed on August 15, 2023, and at that meeting, the Board recommended to the Building Committee that they focus on different options at the Town Hall complex and any possible number of locations along Bear Cove Park Drive. And so that did occur at the, and that's what's in the FAQ, the August 15, 2023 meeting.
Thank you.
I did watch.
Do you have a follow-up question, ma'am?
Yes, I do. I did watch that recording. I'm grateful to the city of, the town of Hingham for recording their meetings. The Bear Cove Park restrictions were not mentioned. There was no mention of Article 97. There was no mention of the wildlife sanctuary. The number of options were very quickly narrowed down by Chair Elizabeth Klein, who said, "Why don't we just look at two instead of three or four so that we can save money and focus in depth on the two options we choose?" So the problems with Bear Cove Park were not discussed, and the issues such as flooding at Union Street was not, were not raised. It was just cut down very quickly, and Mr. Mayo makes it look like a much more reasonable session than it actually was.
All right, thank you for that. I'll just note, one of the reasons why we had tonight's discussion was to go into detail on more Union Street, on Union Street, as Mr. Borgia pointed out, and the Building Committee did study this area for about a year. So I would just note that for the record. All right, any other public comment? Mr. Freitag, come on up.
Thank you. Kevin Freitag, 12 Forest Lane. With respect to the Town Meeting vote from 1985, do you have an opinion about whether that has any legal effect on the property at Bear Cove Park now?
My legal opinion, and I've also conferred with Town Council John Cofflin, is that it is not, because the vote was clearly subject to conditions subsequent, which were never met.
And it sounds like one of those would have been a petition to the Legislature for some sort of special act.
An act of the General Court, yes.
And in all of your research about the process surrounding the 1985 vote and actions taken after it, do you have any understanding as to why there was never, are you aware of whether or not there was ever a request to the General Court, that there be some sort of special legislation passed?
Well, based on the research that was done by the town's legislators at the time, including checking in with the archives, they did not find any evidence of a bill ever being filed on behalf of the town. So, but I did not locate any information regarding why the town, the Select Board, which were authorized, as you know, but never required by Town Meeting. I do not have any information as to why they did not pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carey, go ahead.
Tom Carey, 1131 Main Street. I rise simply to put on the record that prior to the meeting everyone's talking about, which was so slipshod and quick and dismissive, the Building Committee, having been advised by the Board of Selectmen what parcels of town-owned land were available that could be explored pursuant to the vote of Town Meeting, we had done all of that. We had looked at every site, and it had been analyzed and discussed in our public meetings. We had consulted with the experts on senior centers and architects and done all of that work. By the time that the meeting that's being discussed opened, we had already submitted to the Board the, all the information we had gathered, and it was, and the Committee had already determined that of all of those, our recommendation was to look most closely at what was before you. So I want the record to be clear that the town's process in choosing this site had included a great deal of effort over and above that single meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Susan, thank you for your time today. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, following this issue. Appreciate everybody being here. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider appointments and/or reappointments. Does anybody have any suggested appointments this evening? I'll make the first one.
Okay.
I would make a motion to appoint Megan Hansen to the Council on Aging for a term ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
All of them favor. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
An aye as well. The motion carries unanimously, and is there a second motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Broderick to the Weir River Water System Citizens Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
All of them favor Julie.
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have any public comment this evening? Can you go to the Zoom real quick, Brittany, if you don't mind, to see if anybody has their hand up?
No.
All right, not seeing any. We will move to Town Administrators, Select Board Reports, and let me start with Brittany. Anything to report, anything today? All right. Tom, do you have anything?
I just want, I just wanted to let everyone know that the MBTA Water Transportation Study will identify potential improvements to existing ferry routes and infrastructure, explore new routes and terminal locations, and identify multimodal access improvements, and identify upgrades to improve the ferry experience in a discussion happening at an open house on Thursday, October 23, at the Ferry Terminal. There's also a survey that you can complete online. You could probably Google the MBTA's Water Transportation Study to find that survey.
Julie, anything to report tonight?
No.
Liz?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Just a couple of things from me. Last Wednesday, I attended the Hingham Police Department's annual Breast Cancer Awareness fundraiser at Wahlburgers. Want to congratulate the department. I want to thank Wahlburgers for hosting it, and Lieutenant Stephen Durth for all of his work in making that project happen. Also want to congratulate the Historical Society on a very successful tavern night, Saturday night. That's a big event for the Historical Society, and it was extremely well-done. And on Sunday, the Hingham March Walk took place, and it was an excellent, excellent day. The weather was perfect. We had the addition of a vitamin C beer garden this year, which was very well-done by
which was very well done by the brewery. And the police department was wonderful. And it was a great day in Hingham. So, I know we have some other events coming on, coming up, too. I think Saturday, there's a, might be trick-or-treating downtown with some other events going on. So, if you're looking to bring the, your kids out, the weather looks good and it looks like a great day to be out and about. So, please support our local businesses. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of them favor. Whoa, 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 no, we adjourn.
Okay.
Yep.
After you adjourn, I just feel like to stick a little.
Okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead.
Aye.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Motion, we are adjourned.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now, there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play. Or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the "Submit a Service Request" button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So, why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.